A week ago, Wednesday. Wednesday, then she waited for a week.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to this meeting of Troy City Council for Monday, August 17th at 7:00 PM. My name is William Lutz. I am president of council. Tonight, we will begin with an invocation and pledge of allegiance led by council member Lynn Snead. Please run.
Dear God, during these challenging and unpredictable times, we ask your blessing on each person here tonight, on our community and on our country. Be with all those who serve here and abroad in public service, in healthcare, in law enforcement, and in our military. We thank you for our open form of government and ask for discernment in making the decisions before us tonight. Amen. Join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Snead. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Snead? Here. Mr. Allen?
Here.
Mr. Seaver?
Here.
Mr. Rozell?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Twist?
Here.
Mr. Schilling?
Here.
Mr. Twilliger?
Here.
Mr. Swazer?
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read a summary of the minutes of the August 3, 2020, meeting of Troy City Council?
This is Council August 3, 2020. Public hearings were held on ordinance number 0372020 and 0382020. Committee reports Finance Committee recommended legislation be prepared to provide for an accounting mechanism of return advance from the general fund, of capital improvement fund, back to the general fund. Committee recommended legislation be prepared to approve expansion project agreement application filed by Troy Laminating and Coding Inc. Committee recommended legislation be prepared to approve the relocation project agreement application filed by Tele Corporation. On ordinance committee, recommended that legislation be prepared related to a 2.446 acre parcel being annexed, also to fix up the final part, section 7 of Fox Harbor and about 8, the permit application, being filed by state. Resolution number R472020, municipal services for 2.446 acre annexation, first reading and adopted. Resolution number R482020, bucking requirements for the 2.446 acre annexation, first reading and adopted. Resolution number R492020, consenting to the annexation of 2.446 acre parcel, first reading and adopted. Resolution number R502020, return advance of funds to general fund, first reading and adopted. A resolution in memoriam to Gene Melvin, former member of council, was approved. Ordinance number 0372020, a rezoning given hearing and second reading. Ordinance number 0382020, creating designated outdoor refreshment area, was given hearing and second reading. Ordinance number 0392020, final Fox Harbor subdivision 7, first reading and adopted. Ordinance number 0402020, relocation project agreement, Tele Corporation, was given first reading and adopted. Ordinance number 0412020, expansion project agreement, Troy Laminating and Coding Inc., first reading and adopted. Following comments, council adjourned at 5:40 PM.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. How do council members wish to act on the item?
Move to approve.
Second.
It has been moved by Mr. Rozell to approve the minutes, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead? Yes. Minutes are approved.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Moving on to committee reports, we have four reports this evening. The first two are from the Community and Economic Development Department with Mrs. Snead.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Community and Economic Development Committee met on August 10th to review the recommendation from the Troy Planning Commission that the general plan for the Redwood USA LLC, the rezoning of In Lot 11368 be approved. This parcel is 22.515 acres of a recently annexed parcel located between McCade Road and State Route 718. The zoning change is from County A2 General Agricultural District to a city planned development residential PDR. The Troy Planning Commission in recommending approval of the rezoning determined that the proposed rezoning is found to be consistent with the intent and purposes of the City of Troy zoning code, the comprehensive plan, and with similar zoning classifications and uses in the area. This committee considered all the comments made, including those received by email. In accordance with the legal standard to consider such applications, this committee supports the recommendation of the Troy Planning Commission and the findings of staff and recommends that ordinance number 0372020 be approved to provide for the rezoning of In Lot 11368, approval of the general plan of the Redwoods USA LLC plan development as submitted. This is respectfully submitted by Mr. Rozell, Mr. Twist, and myself as chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Snead. Do council members have any comments or questions on the report?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
As a ward representative in the area of this new Redwood proposal, I want to remind council that I have been contacted by three of the homeowners associations representing over 700 voters, and I have done a tour of the neighborhoods myself, talking to residents, and I cannot find anybody that has been in favor of this. So I ask the council to take this into consideration as you cast votes tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling.
I have a comment.
Mr. Seaver, what is yours?
I just wanted to, well, I heard what Mr. Schilling just said. I wanted to say a thank you to Mr. Kerber. I was not able to go to Monday's meeting, but as I'm sure most people know, there is a very well-defined statutory scheme that has to be followed, and Mr. Kerber put together a very nice memo to council to demonstrate what those factors were, and I just wanted to say thank you for that to Mr. Kerber for putting that together.
Thank you, Mr. Seaver.
Mr. Lutz.
Mrs. Snead, please go ahead.
If I could just add to what Mr. Seaver said, that I was here, obviously, at that committee meeting, and we did hear many, many comments. We also had a presentation from staff and the potential use, not the app camp, but the potential use, and as it was stated in the committee report, this plan development meets all of the requirements of the zoning code and the comprehensive plan. It's been reviewed by staff, and all of the questions that we asked for rezoning to be answered by staff have been answered by staff without any negatives being brought up. So I just wanted to make sure that we reiterated that.
Thank you, Mrs. Snead. Any other comments from council members on this report? Moving on, Mrs. Snead, you can go with your second report.
Thank you. The Community and Economic Development Committee met on August 10th also to consider an annexation petition filed by Liberty Lot Sales LLC by Frank Carlo Manager for the annexation of 83.356 acres located off Troy Urbana Road from Staunton Township. It is the recommendation of this committee that legislation be prepared to provide for the three legislative items required by state law related to the Liberty Lot Sales LLC annexation of 83.356 acres from Staunton Township. To meet the timeline of the state law for an expedited annexation, the committee supports emergency legislation, and this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Rozell, Mr. Twist, and myself as chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Snead. Do council members have any comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, we will move to the Finance Committee and Mr. Swazer.
Yes, sir. We have one report tonight, and that is the subordination of an SPD loan for Four Sons Development LLC. On August 10th, committee member Swazer and Phillips met to consider the subordination of an existing loan from the Small Business Development Revolving Loan Fund, or the SPD, made to Four Sons Development LLC, Wayne Westfall, for the property located at 8 South Market Street. The original loan was approved in 2019 and is current. This will allow the owner to secure additional funding from Greenville National Bank to fund additional costs from the building renovation, with the subordination continuing to keep the City of Troy mortgage in second position. This committee recommends that legislation be prepared approving the requested subordination of the SPD loan made to Four Sons Development LLC and authorizing the Director of Public Services and Safety to sign a subordination agreement that will include the mortgage and assignment of rents with Greenville National Bank regarding the property located at 8 South Market Street. The committee supports emergency legislation as the closing of the bank financing is pending and the approval of the subordination of the city's mortgage is required before the closing can take place, and this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Phillips, Mr. Seaver, and myself as chair.
Thank you, Mr. Swazer. Do council members have any comments or questions on this item? Moving on to the last report tonight with the Safety and Health Committee and Mr. Twilliger.
Thank you, Mr. President. This committee met on August 10th to provide a recommendation regarding ordinance number 0382020, establishing a designated outdoor refreshment area known as DORA. This was also the subject of a public hearing on August 3. During both meetings, members of the public stated concerns and questions related to the DORA, and council also received written comments. While there is support for a DORA, generally, the committee and most members of the council have some concerns related to the DORA application recommendation. Having considered all the information provided, it is the recommendation of this committee that council deny the ordinance 0382020, respectfully submitted, Mr. Rozell, Mr. Schilling, and myself, John Twilliger as chair.
Thank you, Mr. Twilliger. Do any council members have any comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, we move into citizen comments on items on the agenda. If you wish to speak to any item that's on the agenda, you're invited to come forward. Please give your name and address. You have two minutes to speak. Mr. Kerber will be our timekeeper.
Good evening, honorable council members. My name is Brad Trenkoff. I'm the trustee of the property located at 2601 McCade Road, just north of the recent annexed property between 718 and McCade Road. I'm here to comment at least on the Economic Development Committee's unanimous approval. I'm not sure, maybe it didn't comply with all the laws, but I think it's critical that the council take into consideration your constituents' clear and outstanding voice. There are unresolved issues related to transportation, and there seems to be no way to resolve those between the county and the city in time for this development to occur. Number two, there is an existing unresolved issue with flooding that's been there for years, and as anyone knows, an apartment development has significantly more buildings and pavement than an R1 development that has grass. So it will cause additional flooding concern and act to exaggerate and aggravate the existing flooding situation there. You've also heard from residents saying apartments, you know, do devalue residential R1s when they're put next to them, and that portion of McCade is not harmonious relative to all the other properties there with an apartment complex. So I don't know at what point you're going to be able to listen and vote based on what the constituents are saying. I'm pretty sure it's going to end up on the ballot if you guys don't vote it down, and then we'll let it take place there, but it's unfortunate when you're hearing such an outstanding voice of 700 and some HOA members in Ward 6, and then other residents as well as people in Concord Township. So I'm urging you again to listen to the outstanding voice of your citizens and to turn this down. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone else wish to come and speak on any item on the agenda this evening? Good evening, sir. Please give your name and address.
Excuse me, I'll get my glasses. My name is Alan Easterday. My address is 140 Gene Circle. I previously sent to each council member on August 12th an email letter containing a group of documented reasons for you to vote no tonight on proposed city ordinance 0382020. Governor Dewine described those approved orders in 2015 as comparable to each applicant gaining their own bourbon streak. Put that way, could we possibly want one? Dayton is such an undesirable area. They call it the Oregon district. Troy will likely attract many of their undesirable patrons, and we will make some of our own. We should stop the subterfuge on this. DORA is not doing this to permit a diner to take a plastic cup from a restaurant to go to his hair appointment. Instead, it's creating a huge party zone over our entire central downtown historic district. Over time, this ordinance can literally destroy the hard work of property owners and negate the tight city controls that have taken place in the building permits granted to keep our downtown area historical in its appearance. The critical issue tonight is not whether to promote the increased sale of intoxicated drinks in downtown Troy, but rather to maintain our present controls over the consumption of the drinks. Keep the responsibility with the sellers of those drinking beverages to be of legal age and not to already be already intoxicated, which are two legal requirements attached to having a liquor permit. They need to remain with the bars and pubs and not shift to the constituency of the City of Troy as now being proposed. It's an impossible appearing task.
Sir, I'll let you read your last sentence.
I could have someone else come up and finish this. I apologize.
That's quite, it's a quick two minutes. I understand.
I'm 88 years old. I apologize.
That's quite all right. Thank you for coming.
I will ask somebody to finish.
Okay. Does anyone else wish to come forward?
You told me I could finish.
I'll let you finish your last sentence.
It's an impossible appearing task to enforce either of those requirements once the drink goes outside the bar, certainly not one to be solved by dedicating a police officer to the DORA or even assigning more to help him or her.
Okay, thank you. Do any other residents wish to come and speak on any item on the agenda this evening? Please come forward and give your name and address. You have two minutes.
My name is Larry Morrow, address 3300 Washington Concord Road, Covington. I farm several parcels in the McCade, 718 Peoples Road area, one of those fields being directly east of the proposed Redwood Apartments. At last week's meeting, I shared concerns about drainage in the area. Mr. Davis stated in his presentation that Troy developments would not allow drainage on neighboring properties. That has clearly not been the case with Stonebridge Meadows. The blatant disrespect shown by the City of Troy to the farm directly east of that subdivision is inexcusable. Unfortunately, after, the same thing will happen with the proposed apartment complex. The engineers stated at last week's meeting that the drainage would go to the Zieggenfelder ditch, which passes through properties owned by Concord Township and also Troy Schools. Last Tuesday, I attended the Concord Township trustees meeting. I specifically asked them if they had been approached by the city engineer or the developer with regard to water crossing their property. They stated that no one has contacted. On August 12th, at 10:58 AM, I talked to Jeff Price with Troy Schools. He also stated he was confident that no one from the City of Troy or the developer had contacted Troy Schools about drainage issues with the proposed complex. This indicates to me you're just wanting to get this thing passed through without concern for water issues. To be clear, I'm not opposed to the apartment complex. Being a farmer, I hate to see good farmland developed, but Troy's growth in all directions is beyond my control. I would urge you council members to not approve of this until these drainage issues can be resolved, and this will also affect future developments of other parcels in the area. I realize that at least some of you council members are probably not extremely familiar with importance of drainage to farmland. Can I finish my sentence?
You can finish your sentence.
Imagine if it was the last six years, it may have been only a couple weeks of time it was dry enough for you to mow your lawn because it had become a swamp due to the mismanagement of your next-door neighbor.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak on any item on the agenda? Please come forward. Sir, please give your name and address, and you have two minutes.
My name is Greg Steiki. I live in 816 Crestfield Drive, Troy Baptist Temple. That is against this, and so thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak on any item on the agenda? Is there anybody out in the hallway? No, okay. All right. Here you know one. We will move on to the next part of our agenda, resolutions, and we will ask Mrs. Knight to please read Resolution R512020.
Resolution number R512020, resolution establishing municipal services for certain territory containing 83.356 acres more or less in Staunton Township, proposed to be annexed to the City of Troy and declaring an emergency. This is the Liberty Lot Sales Annexation. This is the first reading.
Ms. Council, wish to dispose of the other?
Move for suspension.
Second.
It has been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Rozell. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead? Yes. Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Three reading rule has been waived. It has been moved by Mr. Phillips to adopt the resolution, seconded by Mr. Schilling. Are there any final comments or questions on this item? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead? Yes. Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Resolution R522020?
Resolution number R522020, resolution establishing buffer requirements for certain territory containing 83.356 acres more or less in Staunton Township, proposed to be annexed to the City of Troy, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This is the second piece of legislation related to the Liberty Lot Sales LLC annexation, first reading.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. How's council wish to move on the item?
Move for suspension.
It has been moved by Mr. Schilling to suspend the three reading rule, seconded by Mr. Swazer. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Phillips?
May I object that we back here don't know what you're voting on?
Okay.
Because we can't quite hear her.
Okay. I will do that. Right, right now, what we are doing is we're, we are voting on to suspend the three reading rule on Resolution R522020.
They're not concerned that they don't hear you, Bill.
All right. Well, I will do my best to do a little play-by-play as we go along.
We'll give it to Sue.
Okay, we'll give it to Sue.
You can still do it, Mari, regardless of it.
Okay, we can do that, too.
You retired it there, didn't you, Bill? He's retired.
I'll start the roll call over.
Excellent.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead? Yes. Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Move to adopt. Second.
The three reading rule on Resolution R522020 has been suspended. It has been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mrs. Snead. Are there any final comments or questions on the resolution? Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll for adoption of Resolution R522020?
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead? Yes. Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Resolution R532020?
Resolution number R532020, resolution consenting to the annexation of certain territory containing 83.356 acres more or less in Staunton Township to the City of Troy, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. This is the third resolution regarding the Liberty Lot Sales LLC annexation, first reading.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight.
Move to suspend.
Second.
It has been moved to suspend the three reading rule on Resolution R532020 by Mr. Rozell and seconded by Mr. Seaver. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead? Yes. Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Move to adopt. Second.
The three reading rule has been, has been approved. It has been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Swazer and seconded by Mr. Twist. Are there any final comments or questions from council members? Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll on the approval of Resolution R532020?
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead? Yes. Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Moving on to ordinances, will you please read Resolution, Ordinance 0372020?
Ordinance number 0372020, an ordinance changing the zoning of Ben Lot 11368 in the City of Troy, Ohio, from the Miami County zoning classification of A2 General Agricultural District to a City of Troy Plan Development Residential PDR. This has been recommended for approval by the Troy Planning Commission. This is the third reading.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. This is the third reading of the item. How do council members wish to dispose of the item?
Move to adopt.
Second.
It has been moved by Mr. Phillips to adopt ordinance 0372020, seconded by Mr. Swazer. Do council members have any final comments or questions on the ordinance? Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll for the adoption of ordinance 0372020?
Mr. Swazer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead? Yes. Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
No.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read ordinance 0382020?
Ordinance number 0382020, an ordinance creating a designated outdoor refreshment area, known as the downtown Troy Designated Outdoor Refreshment Area, and enacting regulations. This is the third reading.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. I would ask council members in the I would ask council members, in the spirit of trying to reduce confusion, to state your motion in the affirmative. That way, a yes vote is a yes and a no vote is a no on trying to adopt the ordinance. We have a recommendation of denying the ordinance in front of us. So if you could state your motion to approve the ordinance, a yes would mean yes and a no would mean no. Are there any questions?
Yeah. I'd like to move to adopt this ordinance.
And I'll second it.
It has been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mrs. Snee and seconded by Mr. Phillips. Are there any comments or questions? Mr. Twist?
It's my thing, so it's a little slow. So if I'm voting no, that means I do not want the ordinance.
Correct. A yes is a yes and a no is a no.
Sure. Monday.
That's what, that's why I asked, that's why I said what I said.
It's confusing because the ordinance says...
It is confusing, but we have a lot of residents out here that I'm trying to provide clarity for our residents so they understand how this process is going. Are there any other comments or questions? We have a motion to adopt the ordinance. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Snee?
No.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
No.
Mr. Rozell?
No.
Mr. Phillips?
No.
Mr. Twist?
No.
Mr. Schilling?
No.
Mr. Twilliger?
No.
Mr. Schwizer?
No.
Ordinance fails adoption.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read ordinance 042-2020?
Ordinance number 042-2020. Ordinance supporting a mortgage lien for Four Sons Development LLC and declaring an emergency. The Finance Committee reported on this this evening. This is the first reading.
Move to suspend.
Second. It has been moved to suspend the three reading rule on ordinance 042-2020 by Mr. Rozell, seconded by Mr. Seaver. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Second. The three reading rule has been suspended. It has been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Phillips. It has been seconded by Mr. Schilling. Are there any final comments or questions on the ordinance? Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Schwizer?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Wonderful. We move on to communications and announcements. Mrs. Knight, are there any communications right now?
No, sir, there are not.
Thank you. Mrs. Knight, if I ask you to pass the microphone over to the mayor. Mayor Oda, do you have any comments tonight?
No.
All right. Mr. Titterington, do you have any comments tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of brief ones. First of all, Labor Day is on September 7th. Just a reminder to everybody that while the city offices will be closed, refuse and recycling will be picked up on schedule, so there will be no delay. Second thing I do want to point out, on the Items of Interest Report, we had a rather monumental promotional ceremony after 22 years. We have a new police chief, Sean McKinney. So I want to welcome, congratulate him, not welcome him since he's been here for a long time, but welcome him to his new role. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Titterington. Director of Law, Mr. Kerber, do you have anything this evening?
That would require the mic.
Thank you, Mr. Kerber. City Auditor, Mr. Friggy, do you have anything?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Friggy. Do council members have any comments that they would like to make this evening? Mr. Phillips?
I have a couple of questions for Mr. Titterington. Number one is, on the 200 block of Main Street, we have a building that was struck by the tornado, and we still have a sidewalk that's blocked, and do we have a progress report on what is occurring with that building? And then the other building that's over in the northeast quadrant also, that had the roof damage next to the Cass Building.
That's your third one, too.
I do have a third one.
So those two buildings were damaged by the tornado. There were some prolonged insurance back and forth between the contractor and the insurance company. In both those cases, the claims have been resolved, at least to the point where they, in the case of the Tavern Building, I think this is the first one you're talking about, they are, we have been in contact with them. They are in the midst of looking at a couple of different options, one of which will be to whitebox the interior and repair the exterior. We are going to be following up with them this week or next to see where they're at and look at whatever options we can to open up that sidewalk as soon as possible. And that's what that delay was. Salvation Army Building, which is next to the Cass Building in Ruby's, actually, I saw workers today working on that building. That insurance, I think there's still some issues with the insurance settlement, but it's to the point where they know that they need to get things repaired, and so they've begun that work.
The third one I have is a building that Mr. Schwizer talked about a couple of weeks ago. It's a residence, I believe it's on Drury Lane, that had a fire, and there's still continuing questions on that one.
That was part of an investigation. I believe the investigation finally did close on that. I believe it was the state fire marshal that was involved in that one. They have resolved that investigation, or at least concluded what they're going to conclude in the investigation. So the next step is we are in contact with the property owner to start rehab work, tear down, whatever is appropriate for that property.
Thank you.
Do any other council members have any comments or questions this evening? Seeing none, any city staff members have any comments or questions? Anyone in the audience that would like to address council? Now's the time to do it. Please come up, give your name and address. You have as much time as you may consume.
My name is Nelson Swineyard, 1334 Keller Drive. I just want to thank the council for the prudent decision in turning down the door project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My law, my price.
Yes, yes, sir. We will need your name and address again, sir.
My name is Alan Easterday. I live at 140 Gene Circle, and I wish to thank you. I think you acted responsibly, denied so much work to be said, but anything appears, so many unknowns, speculations. I think it's always wise to go cautiously and prudently. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
Dave Pinkerton, 2315 McKay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else in the audience that would like to address council this evening on any topic? Please come forward.
I just have a quick question. Larry Morrow again. 3300 Washington Concord Road, Covington.